Well, maybe we could talk about that at the next meeting. Brian asked me to move things along tonight. So why don't we do this? Why don't we keep this on? We can either keep it on as a follow-up item or put it on the next financial meeting. You know, we try to do our financial matters in the beginning of the month and then the second meeting try to do things that aren't so financially related.
So, so want to table this till the first meeting of...
Why don't we just continue it? Table has a different connotation.
Right, okay. Continue it to...
Put it on again?
Yes, continue it till first November. The first financial meeting. The financial meeting in November.
Can I just ask to what end? Maybe I'm missing something, but it seems like it's just step one and we're trying to grow the policy. So can't we just establish a policy with the long-range commission should be doing? And what you think should be done and over what period of time things should be planned? I mean, that's really step one. And step two, you're talking about all this funding and everything else, but that's all secondary. I mean, you need to know what you need to know, so I think that's what we're...
But I think that this board is the ultimate board because we do not have a board of finance. Many towns our size have boards of finance. Portland does not have a board of finance. So remember, we are the policymaking board, you are the finance board, you are the water authority, and you are the sewer authority, and you're a few other authorities.
I understand that. All I'm saying is stuff number one is that we need the information.
So Brian, what you're saying is that we need that plan, the well-developed plan.
Can we start with the one that we have?
I agree with Susan. We have one.
You can start with it, but I just don't think five years is quite... I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I'm just speaking personally how I feel, but I just don't think five years makes it...
Can you comment why five might be versus two?
Well, I mean, five years has... I mean, the fifth year has other things in it and has going out further than that.
Okay. But when does something, for instance, when does a... We want a new firehouse come into play, right? You're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars. Don't you want to know that before five years that that's coming down the road? That's my point. Because other...
Yeah, but in the fifth year.
No.
No.
Susan, what I meant was let's start with the five-year what we have.
Yeah, let's look at it, right?
And then add to it, like Brian's saying.
We can do that.
But just throw another couple more years, keep adding to the back end of it so we know long-term projections. I know exactly what Brian's saying and it makes sense and there's got to be a way to do it. It's pretty easy. Put it on paper, how far out we want to go, and start writing numbers.
So Susan...
Yes.
I see that Rick Kelsey's here.
Yes.
Could he just advise us at this point as to some of the things that have been discussed? We've got this plan that's sitting before us now. A firehouse, a firehouse is looming. How does... I guess what we're looking for is how all these pieces fit together and how we make sense of it as we budget for it.
Well, I think our finance director can also assist.
Okay, either one, both.
He just ran.
He left.
Really fancy.
Right, he got up and left. We can continue or you can ask to have it postponed? I'll leave it up to the board.
We can continue. It doesn't matter to me. I mean, we could do it another week, I don't care, but I'm just telling you what my thoughts are, that's all.
Okay, so could you repeat it again, Ryan? You want...
Just simply, and again, it's just my opinion, I don't know if everybody agrees with me, but I think that the plan should be longer than five years. So you factor in one of the projects that you know are coming down the road.
Okay.
So you know what the numbers are.
Okay, that would also, and I think Rick would agree, that would be a... What do they call that, Rick, when you actually put money away for...
Sinking fund or something.
Yeah, yeah, and there's a...
SRO. If I could just...
Sure, go ahead.
You know, you didn't have a system that was broken. I mean, I went through 22 long-range capitals and you had a good practice up to a few years ago. I mean, it went, the directors submitted our requests to the first selectman, they went to the first selectman, they went to the finance director, and they went to the long-range capital. And we went to the long-range capital, all those departments, and the long-range capital commission heard what our needs were, and they sorted it out and gave it, but you, the board, had the information. So you were up to speed with what was going on. For the last three years, you haven't had any clue of what I submitted. All you got was what came down from above. So you didn't really know what I, what my needs were or Brian's needs were because the long-range capital commission wasn't involved. So your system worked before. There was always a problem. You had, your boards had reasonably good information because there was a lot of interaction between the department of the long-range capital commission and you, the board. I think a five-year term is probably adequate. It worked in the past. It was always usually you understood what our needs were, what it was always about, and rightfully so, and it will be again, is how much can the tax pay us there on a million acres? It's just communication. You just have a cap for whatever reason. So five, more than five years gets tough for us. I mean, I struggle, shame on me, maybe it's just me looking five years out. I mean, yeah, you've got the whole issue of how long is that building going to be, but that's a whole nother can of worms. And we always talked about, I know Don Goodrich went for a sinking fund or similar to that where you put money aside and try to do that. But that never came to pass. But we had a process here that worked and it was because you, the board, understood what our needs were. You haven't in some time, and I think that's kind of where we got ourselves a little bit behind.
Well, I'd like to go back to that system. It seems like it would solve a lot of things.
Sure, sure. But it's, the onus is also on this board.
Right.
And you have to want this information.
Yes.
And you have to go on the field trips. And I can tell you that we have tried to schedule them and they haven't always been wanted. So if you want them, I'm more than happy to help set them up. And we also, I know the sidewalk committee, which unfortunately isn't here anymore, and it was Carl and Ryan along with Fred and myself. I mean, Carl and Ryan and I walked sidewalks one weekend and we looked and counted all the different sidewalks that needed to be repaired. And I can tell you, before long, there was an awful lot that needed to be done, but they took it upon themselves to say, let's go and do this. So that would be great. Happy to do that. I think you should also tour the schools. We haven't done that in a long time, so we could definitely tour the firehouses on the school buildings, but it's going to take a whole couple of days.
I have a question for Rick and for Sue.
Sure.
Because it was before my time. So up until a couple of years ago, communication you felt was good, everyone was kind of talking. Did it result in more dollars for what you needed? Are you saying that the communication enhanced the dollars or have the dollars you've gotten been consistent, but you think there's been less communication there? I'm trying to isolate what you think.
Well, I think the last two years, you know, there was zero dollars allocated, for example.
But before then, it was more.
Well, before then, it was better because you, the board, gave input. You haven't gotten the information for two years, so you didn't really know what his needs were or my needs were or Park and Rec's needs were because you didn't get that information. You didn't see what my proposed long-range capital was. You saw what the first selectman and the finance directors proposed long-range capital submission was. And what happened was, is if I needed, I felt I needed this, this, this in year one or two, it just automatically went to zero and that slid to year three, four, or five. So nothing got funded. I mean, nothing, zero got funded, zero, in highway or public works for the most part for two years, zero dollars.
And I think that was the frustration that Eggalies was pointing out.
All right, all right, all right. Okay, one at a time, please.
Michael, you should invite Michael to attend your next discussion if I think you could chip better luck than I can.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on?
Only thing I'll add... Oh, Tom's back. Only thing, my only thought real quickly on this whole thing. It sounds like, I mean, I like the five-year idea. It sounds like what long-range capital would probably want is obviously having some funding amount that can chip away, as you said, at the various things. So, I mean, let's not table it, but let's continue this conversation. But I think, to me, that makes sense. I mean, as long as we can afford it, as long as it makes sense, and maybe it fits into the, you know, we can fit it into the existing tax we have, but if there's X amount of dollars every year that could be applied toward whatever these projects are, that might be where the discussion goes. But I like that to be maybe a target of discussion.
And I think we need to point out that there are new members of this board. And for a few years, there were continuing members of this board that had had a lot of information and had gone on the tours and had... So we have one, two, three new members this month.
Three fresh new faces.
Although intuitively, unless you increase taxes tremendously, you're not putting money aside in your future if you have all these needs. So this is not going to happen.
Unless you cut services or you take advantage of low interest rates. And we've also taken advantage of lease-to-own programs because their interest rates have been very low. And I will get you that document that I referenced earlier that you can see the things that happened.
Just for me, I think it would be important, since we will be the decision-making body, that we get the information unfiltered. It sounds like...
Of course.
Okay. It just, what I heard just recently was that some people got the information, it didn't trickle. I just listened to Rick.
Okay. I do want to say, okay, if there's ever information that people want, I will give it to you.
Okay.
And we will certainly abide by your policy. This board, and you haven't been here for a budget season, so...
Right, I haven't.
We will do whatever you want. I am committed to that.
Okay, but I can only judge on what I've heard. And what I've heard so far was that there have been recommendations, there have been lists made, and then those lists, and this is my word, not Rick's, those lists have been scrubbed and reduced to something different that you and Tom have and this board doesn't see. Consequently, the long-term capital commission hasn't met... I, these are the things I'm hearing. Maybe I'm not hearing what's really going on.
I would say that the board has full knowledge of the process and what happens.
The full board has known everything. Okay, thank you.
Are we ready to move on? Number 10, vehicles for police and public works. You have a resolution in front of you? I'll read it to get it started. Authorization to use capital non-recurring fund balance to purchase two police vehicles. Whereas the police department is running numerous high-mileage vehicles of which have costly repairs, and whereas the public works director's current vehicle has mechanical damage that is too costly to repair, and whereas the police department is going to transfer one of their vehicles with about 60,000 miles to the public works director for his use, and whereas the police department will then acquire two equipped pursuit-related vehicles for the department at a cost of approximately $70,000 using fund balance in the capital non-recurring fund and any remaining funds from previous authorizations for any additional related costs. And whereas the town has used GovDeals website to sell various assets and the revenues received are recorded in Fund VIII, now therefore be it resolved that the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves the supplemental appropriation from capital non-recurring fund balance in the amount of $70,000 and authorizes these funds to be increased to account number 08-141-000-89080, equipped cruiser replacement police. And in accordance with Chapter 12, Section 1203.2 of the Town of Portland Charter, a public hearing is required, and in accordance with Chapter 5, Section 503G, we also require approval of this at a special town meeting. So this board's function tonight would be to send a resolution, which is your draft here, to a public hearing, which I would hope would be our next meeting, which I believe is the 2019.
Does that move the dates? Someone?
Second. Discussion?
Can I just ask, the $70,000, that's the total dollars for two vehicles, correct?
Yes. Is that correct, Tom?
The belief is that it'd be total of $70,000 for two vehicles. There was a little bit of remainder of funds, about $5,000 did remain. If any extraneous costs do arise, then some of those $5,000 would be utilized to acquire the two vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion is made to send this to a public hearing on the 19th of October. What time do you want it on? Seven o'clock? It'll be here in the Mary Flood Room. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. Monthly budget report.
The report starts with the budget revenue. In this, we've received a nice amount of our property tax. We'll get, hopefully, the remainder of such after January. We are seeing motor vehicles yet supplement has not been collected at this point. The educational cost-sharing monies have not come in at this point. State Mwegan has not come in at this point, as well as elderly tax relief. We did receive our municipal revenue sharing allotment. The amount that was budgeted did come in at 192,705. So far, monies that are received based upon the senior center boss being run, the amounts have not come in, but they generally come in on a quarterly basis. Property tax, rent, property rental, which is the use of the Brownsville Exploration Park, has done well. That's a 395 versus a revenue budget of 375. Miscellaneous finance is a 31,000 exceeding the 18,000, and that was based upon a $30,000 receipt from a tax deferral deed from an old, from a, one of the last remaining, from a property tax incentive program that we had.
Tom, on the education cost-sharing, did I pay that in two installments?
There's multiple installments that are dispersed throughout the year.
Okay.
Other revenue is a 24,000, which exceeded the $1,000, and that is the amount of Karma's distribution to us. So far, on the expenditures, we're doing quite, you know, well within the most items. So far, we are in excess on highway and overtime, Page 9, and that is mostly due to the Main Street streetscape project as well as some other overtime that's required for the department. Legal, we'll have to continue to watch on that as it's, the legal costs continue to rise and as we have felt multiple activities in place. And the remainder of the budget, we will keep watching as it goes along. Yes, Mr. Paul?
Still a couple of questions. What do you anticipate? Do you anticipate that the reevaluation will have positive or negative impact on the budget, based on what you've heard from other towns?
It's very hard right now to determine. Our evaluators are working diligently. The various components and the various section leaders have come and are meeting with Ms. Petito and working diligently to get to a point. Will we need to, we need to follow that process through and see how it really comes apart? It's really, it's too premature to predict.
When do you think you'll have a sense of which direction that's going to be?
When they go through their process.
Yeah, but when is that time? Two months, eight months?
I would need to follow up with the assessor to get a better angle on when that would
Anything else? Thank you, Tom. Are there any appointments to boards or commissions tonight? I have none. We'll go on to refunds of excess payments. Kathy?
Yep, I make a motion to refund $15.54 to Chauncey J. Copeland Jr.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
I make a motion to refund $24.19 to Chauncey J. Copeland Jr. or Lois C. Copeland.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve refund of $35.33 to Bryant D. Goodrich.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to refund $31.28 to Timothy McMillan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Make a motion to approve $22, to refund $22.60 to Mark Giannetti.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Motion passes.
Make a motion to refund $860.11 to Financial Service Vehicle Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have no status report. Public comment? No public comment tonight? Informal discussion? I wanted to, I know that we've talked about this before, and I just wanted to give you some update on the sand salt shed. As you may know, there is a salt shed, right, Rick? At Sand, excuse me, at Sage Hollow Road. And we applied for a grant in 2012, I believe it was, and, or 2013, somewhere in that, I think it was in October of 20...
We applied in August 13th.
Yeah, but the award was in October, right?
Correct.
Of 2012, okay. And we put forward a change to the shed, and when we put forward the change, before we had gotten all of the paperwork for the grant, it was determined by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, as well as Department of Public Health, that they wanted more information as to how that shed was going to be built. The reason is, it's on a Level A aquifer, and the aquifer leads into the town's well, which is part of our public water supply. And the, at the time, the sand and the salt had been mixed on the ground, and with the salt going into the, onto the ground, DEEP said that was not what they wanted. They wanted a bigger building with a better foundation, and more to the point, they would like, since they're funding this, that it be not in an aquifer protection zone. I will point out that the water from the well does have a high sodium content at the present time. It is mixed with MDC water, which reduces the percentage or the amount of sodium in the water. So it is okay, the water is fine. But the concern in any aquifer protection zone is that the water won't be protected and that best practices be followed. So we had a meeting, I'm skipping some of the middle part because we will probably go into more detail of this at another time. But what our funder, which is Department of Economic and Community Development, they hosted a meeting in December of 2015. And at the meeting was our town engineer, myself, and Rick, Tim Sullivan, who's the Assistant Commissioner for DECD, along with some of his staff, as well as staff from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and I believe there was a representative there from the Department of Public Health as well. Department of Public Health has jurisdiction over the quality of drinking water, and DEEP would have jurisdiction over other aspects of the land there, as you would know. So what they told us at that meeting is they would fund a, the sand salt shed because they know it will cost more money to move it, and they asked us to find another location within the town that would not be on an aquifer. So after Jeff Jacobson's team looked at the various properties owned by the town, they suggested a few places, and when they were all analyzed, it appears that the location at the transfer station would be appropriate. So they have allowed us to hire Jacobson Engineering through a contract to look at how a salt shed, sand salt shed, could be built on a landfill, which, as you know, is made up with trash. So some of the borings have been done, some of the soil analysis has been done, and also they've looked, at least their first try, they're looking at the cost of the building, which is exorbitant. It's very high. I shared with the DE, DECD, our funding agent, and she said that's very high. She asked that it be revisited. And she also asked, and that's why I'm talking about it with you tonight, how the town would be willing to share in the cost of the facility. And what I was going to do was to write back to her and say that certainly the steep grant that we received, which is a little over $230,000, if my memory serves me correctly, some of which has been spent on the engineering, should be allocated toward this. Certainly the land is something that the town is taking care of, as well as in-kind services from our town or public works department. If you choose to allocate more money, there's another opportunity for you to take a look at your long-range capital and see about additional use of those dollars. It, you know, begs the question of taking care of our roads and taking care of the needs of public works is very complicated and very difficult, and particularly when you're in a sensitive area like at Sage Hollow. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. Yeah, go ahead.
So this is the state would like us to move it due to the fact that we have a salt facility within a Level A aquifer? What is the state proposing? I'm assuming, I'm not assuming, I know they use pure salt when they drive by our highway garage, and I also know there's a storm drain that directly goes into the field across from the highway garage or in that area, putting salt down. Other towns, I've seen signs that say reduce salt ahead aquifer protection area or watershed, I believe the word. So from my perspective, mixing salt and putting it inside of a facility that's contained is not the issue. The issue would be what you're doing in the proximity of the well, if that's what we're talking about, or in the aquifer area, the spreading, whether it be on Sage Hollow Road, a town road, or whether it be on Route 17, a state road. You're putting down, the product that they're telling you shouldn't be stored inside of a contained building. So this is...
It's not just inside the building though, Ben, if I could just clarify. It was that the size of the building is so small that the mixing of the sand and the salt has been done on the ground, not inside.
Right.
And we didn't have the space for the storage of the mixed product.
Okay.
So the mixed product had been outside, and they told us that we can't have that.
That's what that steep grant was for in 2012, for 227,000, correct?
To build another, build two buildings, actually, is what we thought we could get. Well, we originally said one, but then I think we asked that we could have...
And I'm assuming this...
Move it. We were moving it. Right, okay, thank you.
And I'm assuming the second building would be to accommodate the mixing on that side.
Now, that, the two buildings are out at Sand Hill.
Oh, sorry, I'm talking about at our...
The old, the first iteration.
At our old facility, can we just put up the second building and mix there?
Well, the building, what I recall, the building would have to be big enough that you would have the mixing inside the building. They don't want any mixing outside the building.
Okay, and I'm assuming, I shouldn't be assuming, I guess I can ask you, Susan, to ask Rick, is the, was the proposal in 2012 large enough? And I believe we were awarded a steep grant to cover this. Was that facility, in somebody's opinion, large enough? Was that facility, in somebody's opinion, large enough to do that mixing?
Nick?
So I'll keep it short this week. So, in early two thousand and twelve, level A aquifer protection became, came into, into effect statewide. We wanted to comply. And one of the main things that affected us was they said you can no longer store your mixed product outside, which we have done. And we're compliant. So immediately, when that came into effect, I put in a, an application for a steep grant in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. That was August first. October sixteenth, we were notified by OPM that funds will be awarded. And in October, actually, the governor came down and we were the first ones to receive the grant. I then began to try to move forward so that we could be, get into compliance as soon as possible for the next season. And eight months later, in April of thirteen, we received, uh, comments from the DEEP regarding concerns about the project. This is eight months after we were issued the notice of award, that we got the award, that apparently the state looked at it and said, "Yeah, this is great, good thing." We did meet then in May of, May sixth of two thousand and thirteen with the DEEP and DPH. And they, at that point in time, said, they had all kinds of problems with our existing building, which was built in nineteen ninety-one. Um, and it progressed from there to, "Okay, you can't have anything here anymore. We want you to move it out. It's gotta, everything's gotta go. Get it out of here." And then we, uh, were also told that we couldn't do any more, uh, until we, uh, we could go ahead with the engineering. In June, June through December, we surveyed and engineered and, uh, worked on unrelated other stormwater permits that they found we had problems with. And then, um, in January of two thousand and fourteen, I submitted to them, they asked, "Please submit what you're proposing to build." I submitted the site plan, conceptual site plan, and specifications for a building. That was in, uh, January of two thousand and fourteen. Then eight months later, we got a letter from DEEP indicating that our submission was incomplete, eight months later. After I submitted all the stuff eight months later, they said, "Uh, no, your application's incomplete." And they suggested that we look at con- condots plans, which I requested and received. And one of their issues was we had an asphalt floor in our building, but the plans that the DOT gave me had an asphalt floor in the plan. So from that point on, this is back in fourteen, we kind of stepped back and said, you know, they said, "We want you to have a state-of-the-art facility. We need concrete floors. We need, we need, this is what you gotta build." And we said, you know, "You gave us two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, and what you want us to build is a heck of a lot more than that." Well, then it digressed from there to, "We don't, we don't, we don't want you to have it there at all. Uh, we want you to put it somewhere else." And, uh, so from that point till where we are now, which is, we're going on over four years. Finally, we're, we're at the transfer station in a little area that is probably half of what we need, on thirty feet of garbage mixed with whatever at a cost of approximately three million dollars. And they want a match now, which they didn't want before. So again, we, we're four years later, we had a, we proposed something that, to the best of my knowledge, and I've yet to see anything in writing that says it doesn't, because they don't have it. But we want you to go, move everything out, and now it's three million and we want a match.
Rick, can I ask, or Susan, can I ask Rick a few questions?
Did you, did you finish that?
I'm not quite finished, but I'll, I'll go a little bit further, you know, I'll go a little bit further. So again, and I'm, I'm just, um, there's a number of issues here. And in the report, the boring report, which we had at GeoText do, uh, he said that, "Oh, by the way, any asphalt that you put on the landfill out there probably is good for about five years. So you probably gotta replace whatever surface is out there, asphalt, about every five years, it's gonna go to park because it's gonna be on walking ground." So that's probably not a very good thing. Uh, but mo- more important, obviously, the well is of the utmost importance, your aquifer and all that. We recognize that from day one. But more important, uh, on this is, is the logistics of, of how we operate our sand and salt and, and our roads. And, and I think, I've heard, we have a very good reputation for keeping our roads safe in the winter, sanded, and in good condition for the school buses and everything else. One of the reasons we, we do that is, is we have a, we're centrally located within the town. Our public works garage, if you picture it, and most of you have been around town, so we're, we got the best situation you could ever have. We have a public works garage that is, is centrally located. We have our sand and our salt and all our product within two minutes. Uh, so we operate, and, and when our trucks go, they operate out of, you know, we're not operating one into town to somewhere else. We have all our, equipment is right there. So even if we get caught with our pants down, which every town does with a, with a freak storm, we're able to react very, very quick. We can get to our product, we can get out to the town. And that's one of the reasons I think we're, we're pretty successful in what we do. When you get talk about, talking about, again, they want us to. We want you to go here. We want, we, you know, you should go somewhere else. Well, there's not a lot of options. There's a whole pile of restrictions on where you can go, and we did look at a number of them. The transfer station is not, it, it, for two reasons. It's, it's, the space we have available to us is not big enough. It's sitting on thirty feet in, in, under one building of mixed garbage. And the foundation cost to, the sub-foundation cost to even support the foundation of the building is five, about five hundred thousand dollars, four to five hundred thousand dollars of subsurface work that doesn't include any of the paved surfaces, most of which will be paved for us to operate. Then the logistics now of taking the product from where it is now and hauling it to another location. I mean, we put up two years' worth of sand this year in seven days with three men, and it's sitting right where we're gonna use it. And I should comment that we are allowed under the statute to operate the way we operated last year, and this just came into effect, as a matter of fact, I think, October first, and it's good through October eighteenth, if we, if we, we can operate temporarily the way we do uh, for as long as it's less than a hundred and eighty days. So we have everything we need. We got it together in seven days for the next two years, right where we're gonna use it. Centrally located, and, uh, I suggest, uh, that rather than moving everything and spending three million dollars on something that's not gonna function well, that's gonna be a cost burden in any number of ways for the town in the future, which won't allow us to operate nearly as efficiently as we have been. Uh, I suggest to you that, uh, you temporarily can operate, and I did put in this past budget for a, uh, a cover, which was about thirty-seven thousand dollars, to cover our bin where we keep all our salt, but that didn't get funded. So we'll, we'll do what we did last year and put tarps over it, which becomes a bit cumbersome when you get snow on them. But, but that's a far better way to operate, in my opinion, than moving. Moving this operation to the transfer station, no less for three million dollars, uh, would be irresponsible, in my opinion.
Beth?
If we were to put up a structure that would suffice for what you want, where you are, in today's dollars, what do you think it would cost?
You know, again, I submitted back in, so it's four years later, and I, and I intended at that time it would be two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. But that was premised upon building something very similar to what we had built in nineteen ninety-one, which is still in very good condition. But they didn't like that. They said the pole barn structure with the asphalt floor was no good, so they wanted it concrete. Now, of course, you know how salt reacts with concrete, but that's neither here nor there. Um, so...
How does salt react with concrete?
It reacts very badly. It reacts very badly.
I'm assuming that was the case, but...
It, it reacts very badly. If, for example, we've replaced the, the walkout here in front of the library, I think, twice since I've been here because of salting. Salt does not react well with concrete. It reacts much better with asphalt. Ergo why the asphalt floor. So I guess to answer your question, if, if we're allowed to build the other building I wanted to in the location where we are, to their specifications, uh, it, and, and adding four years of doing nothing and escalation and all kinds of other things, uh, I don't know, I'm just guessing, I have no basis for it, but it's probably a half a million bucks or more, of which you have, uh, you know, I don't know what's left of the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I, I think probably the majority of it, Tom probably could tell you. Do you know how much is left of that, correct? Hundred and eighty maybe? We've probably spent thirty? And that thirty, if we have to move, is spent for nothing.
You men- you mentioned earlier that the s- state had sent you a building and it had an asphalt floor, correct?
Yeah. I, they, they actually suggested that we use one of their buildings.
Okay.
And they told me where to ask for it, and I sent for it, and the DOT was kind enough, they got it to me, actually, they got it to me. And I asked for it September eighth, two thousand and fourteen, and I got it September eleventh, which was pretty darned good. But when I looked at it, um, one of their big concerns initially was, it was, you, you got an asphalt floor. Well, it was bituminous concrete, and I think they may have confused the term bituminous concrete with regular concrete. Um, I don't know for sure, but, so, uh, there's a lot of stuff like that. It's been an interesting process, uh, very interesting process.
That's a stupid question. Is there a salt dart that you wanna move?
Is there?
Yeah.
We've discussed that. You could go, we've discussed that a number of times. You could, now, what we do, just so you're all up to speed, is we mix, our, our sand doesn't cost us anything, and it's excellent, it's an excellent product. And we mix it one part salt to five parts sand, which is pretty much diluted. And that does two things. Number one, environmentally, it's not as, as, uh, bad. And two, corrosivity is a big issue with straight-up salt. Uh, environmental issues, sodium, et cetera, are also. You could, and I've told you this before in the past, there's been questions about going right up to, go to straight salt. And I indicated to you that probably you could add three or four hundred thousand dollars a year to your salt budget. And then you'd probably wanna build some type of truck washing facility. Probably it would only be located down at the Water Pollution Control Facility because now, uh, due to the corrosivity of all the straight product, your two hundred thousand dollar plow trucks are probably gonna get, they need to get cleaned much regularly, or you're not gonna have them. So yeah, there's al- there's other alternatives. I mean, you could go, really, the alternatives available to you are, uh, which a lot of towns are using, and mo- just like us, the towns of our size are doing them, sand and salt, but they unfortunately have to buy their sand. Some of the bigger towns, and many of the towns are going right up to straight salt. The, the state uses straight salt, and I got some awesome pictures from last winter at the Four Corners where there's just piles of straight salt, sitting right in that intersection, big time.
I was asking if there's an alternative to salt, could use something else?
Salt. Yeah, well, there's, there's treated salt, which is a, this salt, it's, it's calcium. You gotta use it. That's about it. There's different types of salt. We use a straight salt. There's treated salt, which is mixed with a brine, which I think the state uses some of. We use a, uh, a treated salt around the buildings, uh, because, so we don't track the sand into the buildings. It's, it's harder to clean. So we do use a product on just the parking areas, the schools. We don't use the sand because it's, it's dirty in, inside the schools. But it's corrosive as hell, and that's why you're seeing a lot of the walkways.
I'm just talking about it on this piece of property. So you're mixing salt into sand. Is there some other product that is all...
Right. No. 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 It's, it's either straight salt, or it's, it's, it's a type of salt with sand, or, or there are, but that's it. That's all your options there are.
I have some more general question. What, what is the authority of DEEP? And what is the, you're suggesting it's a suggestion?
I have not been able to find, nor has the town engineer been able to find definitively where they, in their regulations, they say that what I've proposed, uh, cannot be, be, uh, put there. I do believe that if I was proposing a brand-new facility on a aquifer site, that they probably could say no. But I've seen nothing, uh, nor have found nothing. And I've looked to see if they, by regulation, can prohibit us from operating the way we've proposed to. It's really about best management practices. What, what the DEEP wants you to do, and, and rightly so, is to operate, uh, what they call best management practices. That's what they call, and it's, there's certain restrictions on how you should do it, how you can do it, whatever. But it doesn't say you can't do it on a particular site, and it would be a shame.
So if, if we did put up a new structure, you would be mixing inside of it in the future to...
It would be a bigger structure to do that, and I'm not positive. See, I haven't seen, again, where they can force us. Again, there's al- there's been all kinds of, "You can't do this," or, "We want you to do that," or, "You must go there." I haven't seen anything that says in writing, "You must..." So what we would, what my original proposal was, was we would have an asphalt surface, impervious surface. We would bring our sand down, we would have it screened, we would add the salt to it and immediately put it into a sh- a building where it was covered, which was the impetus. All of a sudden, they said, "Well, you can't, you have to mix it inside." I've yet to see in writing where it says that, but maybe I missed it though.
Yet, yet the state is dumping salt.
Well, we are too. I mean, it's, it's immediately when we drive out of that site, we're putting salt on the road. And the aquifer protection area that has, was delineated, goes all the way from, uh, to the river, out to Penfield Hill and Ro- Cox Road. I mean, it's a huge, huge area. But it does, but the, the strange part is that it, the, um, north, what, the north half of our addition on the garage is not in the aquifer protection zone, but the, everything south of it is, and everything east of it is for a long ways. So, I don't know. I don't know.
What alternatives sites were suggested?
There's very few you can do. We thought originally of the, uh, Water Pollution Control Facility down there in that parking lot, but that's in a hundred-year flood zone. You can't have it there. Um, really, uh, not too many. You, you had basically, uh, where we are. Uh, WPCF looked good for a little bit, but that's, again, logistically a nightmare, because it's way down one end of town. And then the transfer station, because that groundwater is already compromised. But there's, but it's, the whole site is garbage. And there's a very little area that's very usable, and even the area we're talking about is compromised because there's garbage under it.
Well, ju- just so we're clear, what you're proposing would be mixing, putting it in the building, minimizing any potential runoff. That's, I'm sure that's the reason we're all doing this. And the reality is, out on the state road at least, they're pure salt, from what I, from what I've seen in most of the storms in your, your...
And, and most towns do, and most state, most state roads do.
They don't wanna add any more than's already there.
But the other thing you, you should...
See, that's the point, that you want to reduce wherever possible. So I think that, that's the point.
So should the state go with a six-to-one ratio to reduce it by at least...
You're not, you're, you're not gonna tell the state, you're not gonna tell the state what to do.
I think we're talking about the sand salt shed right now. And, you know, you're also talking about your funder. So, um, you have to, um, I, I didn't bring all of the material. I wasn't prepared. There's no decision tonight. It's informational. Um, the state, um, person that I spoke with, um, offered to come and arrange another meeting again. Um, I don't know whether they would come and speak with you. But, uh, the state is getting very strict on stormwater management. They're getting very strict as far as, um, protecting aquifers, of course. As you pointed out, Rick, that's very important. Um, so, you know, these are all factors that we're considering. And the cost is so exorbitant that, um, they didn't even consider it at this point. We, we asked Jacobson Engineering to take another look at their numbers.
And the numbers are...
So we're not finished with the project, is my point. So I don't want you to jump to the conclusion that this is going to be funded, because frankly, it's too much money.
The other thing to keep in, in mind, the, the other thing to keep in mind, and, and again, it makes it one more complication in the mix. And it is very complicated, and really, it, it, it's, there's a lot to it. If we're fortunate enough, or I don't know how you look at it, if MDC should take us over, for example, which is something that is contemplated, in all likelihood, they will not use that well. That's a very, we have enough water from the MDC, it was planned that way, where MDC can supply us with all the water on peak day demand, any kind of demand that we need. Obviously, you pay for it.
The amount.
If however, if however, the MDC should come down and we, you know, which is something that you folks are looking at. We have a report in front of us, and the report even says it in the report, that, uh, have we figured in, factoring in the benefit to us, if in fact, and I'm not suggesting anything. If, if they took us over, it's likely they probably would not use that well. And then, that whole thing would be, this, so what I'm, again, is kind of suggesting on a temporary basis, until we know... basis, until we know where we're going further, for example, is we have under permit and are allowed to, for at least the next few years, to operate where we are, effectively, efficiently, without spending hardly anything, other than maybe you get a hoop house for us to cover our product, and see where the chips fall out with the MDC, and maybe this whole thing, it would be kind of a shame, in my opinion, to build a three-million-dollar structure on a landfill that's not of adequate size, and then a year after it's done to find out, oh, oh shucks, you know, they're not, let me finish, if I could please finish.
But if I can just tell you that they're not going to, they told me, that's too much money.
Well, I, we told, we told, we suggested this, we, the town engineer and I, a year ago, said, you know, it's gonna be a ton of money because you're trying to build something on a landfill. So this was not a surprise at all to me, nor to the town engineer.
And the landfill obviously has recurring costs, if the asphalt's gonna crumble every five years, and you're transporting materials there, that's, that's a problem in itself.
So, a little cooperation, which we have, in my opinion, we have not received from the state agencies at all, and I don't know how to get there, and you may not get there, but in the interim, again, until you see what may happen with MDC and/or, and I have no idea how that's gonna go, you are able to operate, not in violation, with, with what we did last year, because we had no choice, and what we can do without spending a tremendous amount of money, and operate very efficiently.
I, I also wanna put one thing, in terms of aquifer protection, whether you drink the water now, or it's in twenty years from now, or it's your great-grandchildren, you do not want to, if you can at all prevent, and that's the whole point here, prevent any contamination of an aquifer, you don't, even if you don't use it.
Well, and I'll, and I'll go to that, and I'd like to go to that, so, go ahead.
Before I do, just real quickly, because obviously, if it's still, if it's still potentially contaminating, I would feel uncomfortable with that, but did, I would imagine that the state, DEEP, they just wanna stop the contamination, continued contamination, is what I would imagine, that's their goal, right, they don't wanna have it continued, so what would be, in your opinion, the best way to mitigate that inside?
What I proposed, what I proposed, again, this, the regulation, the law, the level A aquifer protection regulations came about statewide in two thousand and eleven.
Right.
It, it applied to everybody, anybody that had a well came under these same deal, and it came down to best management practices, they're called, they're called, you operate smartly, cautiously, carefully, anytime, particularly and more so if you're in a, in an aquifer protection zone, and we met those. And this building that I proposed for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, seven-hundred dollars, to the best of my knowledge and the town engineers, met the criteria, okay, so, a good example, going back to the other one, is not, our biggest aquifer, or, or our biggest water supply was the reservoir, okay, and basically, some of what of an analogy, back in, in the eighties, we were told we had two options, build a filtration plant, or find another source, and the board at that time found another source. So the, so the reservoir is out there, it's not, it's, it's not a water supply, we're not using it, but we're not obviously trying to contaminate it.
So maybe I'm missing something, so, are you saying that the state disapproved that, or the state hasn't approved it?
Has approved what?
Have they, have they said you can't build that building?
The state, this is a wants and needs situation, the state wants us to move our whole operation to another location, wants, wants.
But, I understand that, but would, would building that building for approximately that cost be acceptable to them, I guess, if, that's what I'm asking.
Well, it, it isn't, it isn't acceptable to them, because they've told us to move it, but they, but the regulations don't say you have to move it, it's what they want us to do.
So, so it sounds like that just needs to be clarified, maybe I'm...
Well, we haven't been able to clarify it in four years, so hopefully, maybe you folks can get it clarified.
Well, obviously, the water in that area is of the utmost, the aquifer is of the utmost of importance, clearly, in your opinion, you've said by doing the new, the new building and putting in the asphalt surface would take care of the additional issues in that area, as far as what our responsibility on where you're mixing the salt sand.
In our opinion.
This does, and that's great, and I'm on board with it, this doesn't address that the state, who the DEEP is telling us we should move a facility at a, a large cost to minimize salt in our aquifer area, and I would go out on a limb and assume they're fully aware of where the aquifer area is, the level A mapping clearly encompasses part of Route seventeen, yet they continue to just dump salt on it, and here we are, trying to make an effort to reduce or eliminate any runoff from our mixing, so we're in compliance with that, correct?
It's a bit of a double standard, and I will share this with you, the well, just to, the well that we have there was constructed in nineteen fifty-four, I believe, okay, so it's been there since nineteen fifty-four, about a hundred feet off of a state road that has been heavily sanded, salted, no fault of the state's or anybody else's, so, so it's been there now for a very long time, and the, it's, the well is of good water quality, we have a minimally high standard of sodium, probably due to the state sanding of the road, but, you know, is it of bad quality, we use it, we're allowed to use it? We have not been issued any violations whatsoever in the last, since now, of using the facility that we have, wouldn't you thought if we were in some bad violate, in some, doing something bad there, we would not have received some type of violation? We haven't. Again, I'm just trying to, these are facts, I don't have all the answers, but I'm just saying, think about, think about this, 'cause it's, it's, it's an important issue.
I'd just like to add two things, don't forget that we do have to sweep up a lot of the sand every year, that is an important part of what we do, and at our meeting back in December, we did have one of the DEEP people that give out the citations, said that she could give out a citation, but we were working with them to come into full compliance with whatever, you know, we were trying very, we're all trying very hard to work together, and that's what was said at the meeting.
What was the potential citation?
She, she, there was, there's a lot of, look, there's a lot of anger there, okay, at the meeting, I'll tell you that.
Oh, I was gonna say.
DEEP and DPH are very concerned about the quality of the water, and they're very concerned, and Mr. Kelsey, Rick, is very concerned.
Very concerned also.
About the operations of his department, rightly so.
And the, I'm, I'm in charge of the water department, and I take...
So what, what was the potential violation?
Oh, they already, they issued, they came out to the transfer station and issued violations, for example, issued violations, which, to put canopies and tarps on all of our roll-offs, well, this, I haven't found another place that's been issued that, I mean, we weren't playing ball, and they, they, they went after us. I, I do wanna clarify this, whether you add sand, or whether you don't add sand, under the DEEP's MS4 regulations, we are required to sweep all of our streets every year, no matter what, and to clean all our catch spaces, so whether you have sand, or whether you have straight salt, the cost and the, and the effort is still the same.
Are you aware of, does the sand that you put down affect the aquifer in any way?
Well, again, if you think about it this way, I'm, I'm putting down a product that's diluted five times from what the state is putting down, so again, I dilute my, my, my winter treatment, one to five, theirs is straight up. And like I say, anytime you want, you go by the Four Corners, I got some awesome pictures last winter of...
Well, maybe the state should have you, have you do the aquifer area on Route seventeen?
Well, again, it's, it's a complicated issue, and the state basically has said, they believe, and I, and I, and I've gone to you, kind of gone to a bunch of things, that they're gonna use the state, the straight salt, because they feel that public safety is, is really is there, is paramount to them, but again, you're talking the Department of Transportation, if you're talking with the Department of Public Health, there's a different interest there, obviously, so...
They've done studies, and they've issued reports and so forth, on the use of their products, and those have been published and are available for business, so they are looking at the impact of their product. Obviously, it's not a perfect world, but they, they have looked at it, and you can read the reports, and I'm sure you have, and...
Can you look into having those signs put up, to have them to reduce salt area ahead?
You know, it's all part of the process, I don't, I don't, I want, I think what we're talking about tonight is the sand salt shed, I wanted to give you an update on it, and I wanted to tell you what our communications are, and the last communication was, you know, that's exorbitant price, we're not going to be proceeding, we need to revisit that price, so the engineering firm has been asked to relook at it, and we were asked, and I said I would bring it up to you as far as any additional payments, I had, I got this information, I think, yesterday, from Jacobson Engineering, so, you know, price is just...
I'm just referring to a few signs to protect our aquifer, and I think it would be irresponsible for us now, having this discussion, discussing where the...
Fine, we can certainly talk to them, absolutely, you know, DOT is, is that District One?
District Two.
I thought down to Four Corners, where do they end?
They break, they changed, they used to break up like that, maybe, you know, it's four corners.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they go down, you can give them a call.
Yeah.
One quick question, Susan, how much sand is available at this location in terms of years, without compromising the law fits?
How much sand?
Yeah.
How much time was?
Yeah.
Well, I got two years sitting there right now, if you ever wanna go by, look, and I'm just saying, I'm doing this, so I have it for twenty years, without, without impacting the resources you have available to you, that hopefully someday will be able to use. But right now, the footprint without compromising the law fits, probably, that's a, and it varies, the material does vary, right now, or the last couple of years, reminding you stuff that changes, most of the damage, I'm guessing, I'm guessing, probably ten to forty would be the recent year, would be a good, good procedure.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anything on the follow-up, so entertain a motion to go ahead.
Susan, I, I had something under informal discussion.
Yes, we're still on that.
At our last meeting, a question was put forth by Brian, and I also had the same question, you noticed that my hand was up, and was, and that had to do with, could we go into executive session? And your reply was that we had accepted the agenda as it was written. I, I've looked, I've tried to find, because my memory from times past has been that we could amend the agenda.
Yeah.
Everything I saw said that we could amend the agenda, and that we potentially could have gone into executive session, you know, the vote was taken and all that's done, but our information at that evening was that we could not amend the agenda, once we had accepted it.
Did we have our attorney there?
We did, and she, she concurred with you that we could not, so, you know, I'd like to have a ruling from her that...
Sure.
Because going through Roberts Rules of Order, by majority or two-thirds vote, we could amend the agenda, and...
In the middle of the meeting?
Yeah.
I'll ask her, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.